Good evening, this is the Planning Commission's study session. It's July 21st at 6:00 PM and it's being held at the Senior Center. And I welcome everyone that is here. It's a study session between the City Council and the Planning Commissioners and welcome to all the guests that are here. Roll call please.
Commissioner Samut.
Here.
Commissioner Biassadi.
Here.
Chair Johnson.
Here.
Agency member Ruane.
Here.
Agency member Ibarra.
Here.
And Commissioner Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson should be on his way. Commissioner Marshall cannot be here tonight. He has, actually Commissioner Mishra just had a child so he will not be here tonight. And there are several agency members as well as Commissioner Marshall who have a conflict and I don't know if the City Manager would like to go into that.
I would just like to recognize that there are two Agency Board members here tonight. Agency Board members Ruane and Ibarra have been identified by the City Council as the persons who have primary responsibility for the City Council's role in development and guidance of the Transit Corridors Plan. As two of our Council members have conflicts of interest arising from their ownership of property sufficiently nearby or within the area that is being studied by the Transit Corridors Plan. And Mayor Franzella serves in a role that only as necessary in order because he also has the same conflict but he drew a straw to participate in this process when it is necessary. So there is no lack of interest on the part of the City Council and the Agency Board but it is an unfortunate reality that only two of our members can participate on a regular basis.
Thank you. And Council member Ruane, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. The Pledge of Allegiance is to clarify that the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the judicial and legislative justice.
The next item on the agenda is for items that are not on the agenda if anyone wishes to comment. This is the time to bring something up that may not be on the agenda. Is there anyone from the audience that has any comments? Okay. The next item of business is conduct of business and this is basically to review the progress in preparation of the downtown and transit corridor plans and obtain a guidance for the next phase of the planning efforts. And I'd like to now introduce our Planning Director, Mr. Aknin, if you can.
Sure. Well, thank you and good evening. Now, I'll make my introduction short. We have till 7 o'clock when the Planning Commission starts. Recently this year, the Planning Commission as well as the City Council adopted a general plan and in that general plan, the transit corridor area was created. As part of this to implement the plan, we've been doing a transit, having a transit corridor specific plan that concentrates on the downtown and surrounding area. And this process has been going on since October of last year. So far, we've had four steering committee meetings. There was a steering committee appointed, various community members, business owners, local residents appointed to the steering committee and there's been four meetings. There's also been two successful community workshops. And leading this effort is the consultant for MIG, Chris and Anshy from MIG are here tonight. And what they will be presenting to you is an overview of what decisions have been made so far, what the vision that's been created by these community meetings has been so far. And ask for your direction on this as well as just to fill you in and what is going on. So I will turn it over to Chris at this point.
Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Members of the Council and Commission. Thank you for having us here tonight. That's indeed, the purpose of tonight's session is to check in with you all, apprise you of where we're at in the process, as well as get some confirmation and direction from you. We have some key questions or points where we want to make sure we're headed off in the right direction. As Mr. Aknin described, it's been a very robust process to date with several committee meetings, great workshops, walking tour, we have a great website, there's been a nice set of data and information from which all of this is built and we're excited to share that with you here this evening. I do want to underscore what a great experience it has been working with staff and their guidance and direction and coordination has been crucial in this effort and we continue to see that as very important to the success of the project. I do want to note one thing. My wife is pregnant and she's a couple weeks out here so I have to have my cellphone on. So I'm vibrate but I have to get that, you know, if I have to take the call, I will but hopefully that won't be happening.
That's not on here.
That's not on the agenda. I apologize. Anyway, we will jump right into it. I know we do have time constraints here. We have a presentation that's going to take a little while here but we do want to save times for question and comment. And I will try to go through pretty quickly. If I'm going too fast or if there's anything you have a question about, please raise your hand and we can discuss. So, the community really has cultivated what we believe is a pretty dynamic vision for the future. And that is something that is seen that San Bruno is ready for a new stage, a new era in its development as a community and we'll be describing that here. But it's pretty exciting. Three main parts here, we're going to give you a quick update, Aaron gave you a lot of it there, to the planning process. We're going to talk about the development strategy, how are things moving forward in this land use planning concept for the specific plan? And then we have three what are called catalytic development sites that we want your comments and feedback on. These are almost, they're catalysts, they're jumpstarts for implementation of this plan that I think you all will be very interested in. Specifically, what do we need from you tonight? Confirmation of this overall development strategy and the items that come along with that including land uses and building heights. And then confirmation of site design concepts and thinking there as we move toward more specific planning for these catalytic development sites. So very quickly here, the project purpose, I think most of you are aware, is to really build on the community vision, stimulate economic development and marry that, tie that with public improvements, funds that we have so we get a lot of bang for our buck, both private and public sector. And then, out of this, there will be very specific guidelines that lend toward a very action-oriented roadmap for future development, envisioning this center of San Bruno that is really envisioned as a different or more enhanced place in the future in many ways. From a project process standpoint, you're not meant to read this whole thing, basically we're about halfway through here. We've done a lot of process, we're here this evening at this joint session and then, but pretty soon now, we're going to start putting pen to paper and developing the plan documents. That's why we need your approval here this evening, your confirmation on direction. From engagement standpoint, we already talked about this, very robust, fun, interactive process. People have been jazzed up and excited here, a number of different types of sessions where large group forums, small group forums, people sitting around maps and drawing with their own pen to paper and discussing the future of the central part of the city. From this process, we've developed a vision framework, looking toward what is the community vision, what do people want to see in the future and what are the land uses and other strategies that support that, as well as a development strategy. How does that vision play out on the ground? What does that mean from a spatial standpoint? What does it mean from land use planning, public improvements, traffic and circulation, et cetera? And that's what I'm going to walk through now, the building a development strategy. So, just to orient everyone, make sure we're aware of the project area. Essentially, is the areas, are the areas surrounding San Bruno Avenue here, Huntington going north and San Mateo Avenue coming south, and then El Camino Real right here. It's this black dotted line here, really meant to encompass the core of the community, the historic downtown heart, as well as these major corridors, these lines, transit corridors, traffic corridors that connect ourselves to this greater city and surrounding region. So we'll start here with San Bruno Avenue. We're going to walk through each of the areas and build up this development strategy for you. These are things we heard from folks. This is the major point, mixed-use residence-serving neighborhood. People thought that San Bruno Avenue could be more of a green corridor along here and also a pleasant gateway into the city and downtown. Right now, we don't necessarily have that feel. You get off the freeway here at 101 and there isn't a distinct sense of place, there isn't guidance coming into the community saying, hey, there's this great cool historic downtown that doesn't feel cookie cutter and like all these other, it doesn't feel like Walnut Creek, it doesn't feel like Santana Row, this is real Main Street America, but you wouldn't necessarily know it here. And so these are some examples and thoughts about how we might start to cultivate some gateway. And this is just initial ideas, not necessarily designed at all from other projects actually that we've been associated with about, but creating that sense of identity and place and entry into the community. People really put that forth as an idea. Some things to keep in mind with respect to land use is the noise contour from the airport. Obviously, the airport is a big part of the adjacency of the community. And essentially, south of this line, or rather north of this line, we can't build any more housing, we can't go high up there with respect to mixed-use housing, et cetera, that people have described. We really need to think about housing more along the corridor this way and other corridors. That's a line we need to take into account. It goes right along here, right at the future Caltrain station in grade separation. So we started to look at the corridor here, we ran these ideas by folks, they initially gave us and then we got, sent them back and said, hey, what do you think? Is this what you're envisioning? And this is the current condition along San Bruno Avenue and people said, you know, we want more trees, more landscaping, this street needs to feel better to us. And that is something we're going to explore more. Right now, it's two lanes in each direction. We know that in the past, it's been moved to one lane in each direction and for a time being. And there are certain design factors we want to look into, make this more walkable, to make it a place where people feel comfortable walking from north to south, that's a big point that we heard. Trying to get across there is, it's pretty brutal whether you're in, we came in tonight and if you're in an automobile trying to get across, it's, it can be difficult particularly during peak times. The west section here, then along here, the right of way gets bigger, people expressed, this is actually at the corner of San Bruno Avenue and El Camino Real, people expressed, well, here's the current condition, this might be something we want to look at more. Where the parcel sizes are bigger, this is where we could put in some housing, this would also create gateway type feel as we come across the tracks. And so an environment where you might have more density coming up, this is office here but they could be residential and maybe they're set back so they don't feel like they're looming so much over the street. People talked about green roofs and the incredible views we have here. We want to make sure we're looking at that as different options. So, this is a question to pose to you all this evening, we'll talk about more during discussion. Is this sort of building height, four to five stories, the type of thing you think you would like to see along San Bruno Avenue, west of the tracks? This is something that we got pretty good confirmation from folks in the community that they thought would be acceptable and desirable. Mixed-use, commercial, residential, live-work, as I mentioned, the green roofs, green garden decks, very exciting for folks. So then we get to the station area, we backtrack a little bit, and the future station area, people thought about, this is a true transit-oriented development hub, very interesting, thinking in the terms about our future path as a community, as one of a string of communities along the peninsula. Because residential uses are not allowed here because of that noise contour, really a focus on office and commercial uses. So this is what we see today. And people envision something different around the area here. And we put these images to our folks, well, do you think San Mateo, a station environment like this is what you want to see? Or maybe more like Fruitvale Village over on the Bart Line in Oakland? Or Emeryville, you know, Emeryville has not been a place that's been afraid to take on density that Berkeley hasn't taken on and they've garnered a lot of revenue from that, they've created different places in the last just 10 to 15 years there. And this is the Amtrak station. And we posed this to folks, well, a lot of our data shows that people want to create here, in this area, not necessarily along El Camino Real or on San Mateo Avenue, but at the station area, something that feels like this, a real dynamic kind of transit-oriented development environment. We'll talk about, this is a catalytic site, we'll talk a little bit about this in a few more minutes more specifically. And then this just shows some of the renderings of the future Caltrain grade separation, the idea being that this should have gateway feel, it should be bright and energetic and again, looking at some of the building heights along here. The grade separation committee was a process that took place, we're incorporating that in here. Again, some of the same concepts that, we want to make sure this is a bright, fun place to go under, not something that is real obtrusive and heavy for the community. Perhaps there are kiosks or retail that, but up against this environment, really envisioning a different place at that maze of streets and the rail tracks there. And thinking in ways about how, you know, there's going to be an overpass there, how you get along it, how do we create some interesting art, light elements so people feel safe walking across there? All of that is, are things that people brought forth as ideas and have really affirmed during this process. Now, moving on northward to Huntington Avenue, this key link, right now, pretty wide boulevard, something that people believe that should have more beautification to it. This is the existing condition here. And beautification, bike lanes connecting up to the Bart Station, all very key in people's ideas for the future here. And thinking about that bicycle connectivity, that's something that people really brought up as part of the Bicycle Master Plan and making sure that people are coming down from the Bart Station or to the Bart Station when they get to that trans-oriented development area, they're able to easily get down to San Mateo Avenue or back into the neighborhoods or up San Bruno Avenue, up the hill. Then El Camino Real, obviously, a major spine through the community. And in many ways, you know, if San Mateo is the heart of the community, El Camino Real is, I don't know, the veins or the blood coming out. It's a really important part of the city of San Bruno. Beautifying the streetscape, very much in people's minds. Here we are today with the existing condition, the idea of the Grand Boulevard, that is an initiative, as you all know, it's been put forth along all the cities in the, on the peninsula, working together to create El Camino Real as less auto-oriented, more beautified, more multimodal, perhaps along bus rapid transit, other modes in the future. So existing condition, this is an area, there are some larger lots, parcels that may allow for some higher density development, maybe it's some key nodes, that doesn't intrude upon the areas back behind. We would want to make sure that this then would step down behind so it's not looming over a single-family house or residences on either side to the east and west of the corridor. So again, thinking about these yellow areas, what's our threshold? This is basically been expressed by a large part of the community saying, hey, El Camino Real, we can envision it as a place that would take on more of this height or more of this density, we'd get more people in the area who will be able to walk to San Mateo Avenue, frequent our stores, be able to walk up to the Caltrain Station and go north or south to their employment. So definitely some support for these ideas and again, linked into the Grand Boulevard initiative, this is right along the lines of what that process is doing. Housing along this corridor, although not everywhere, you know, in key locations, we understand that there are, there's the need to keep commercial services along the corridor and the commercial services and ideas such as hotels, people really latched onto that saying, we've got a really good opportunity here to take on some of that. People coming into town or flying internationally, maybe they come over to this international feeling place, which is what you really get on San Mateo Avenue. Maybe they don't have time or don't want to go up to San Francisco or if they've done it before, what can they do here for a night or two in maybe more of a smaller or boutique hotel fashion? Then the civic heart area, and I'll try to finish up in the next few minutes because I know that we have a lot to get to discussion-wise. Making the civic heart distinctive very important or to understand that we're the only city on the peninsula here that has a civic presence right on to El Camino Real. Well, that's really an opportunity to leverage what we have, the City Hall, the library, and maybe perhaps improvements later on down the line, thinking about how we can continue to cluster civic uses there and make sure we have these cross-connections that easily get us to other areas. But noted as the civic heart of the community. And then really thinking about cohesive urban design, people said, and that our mixed-use projects might be, we don't want to line everything along El Camino Real with retail that there's not necessarily the market for there, but maybe at key corners, making sure that our mixed-use has that activating, engaging, ground-four pedestrian environment with retail uses along the street. And then, of course, the downtown core. Maintain and build upon historic character, support local businesses, yet widen the mix of businesses, you know. This is one area where people said, you know what, we don't think four, five, six stories is what should happen along San Mateo Avenue. We think that there's something, there's a fabric there that we want to enhance in certain ways but not necessarily really change a lot. So you see here, here's the existing condition and, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for an infill development to go in that might be of lower scale or to add something on, they might have a roof deck with those great views and heating lamps, people said. Realizing the climatic factors here. And then again, looking at land uses and design here, but keeping that fine grain, the historic feel, there have been some nice streetscape improvements that have been done. But things like outdoor dining, let's make sure our regulations in this specific plan really foster that. Again, we might need to put heating lamps outside there, but that's the sort of environment people really express that they would like to see along San Mateo Avenue. And then finally, down here, the community heart. So we have the civic heart here and then the community heart, this gateway aspect coming from the south and some real opportunities here, as we know, new development going in just on this corner here that's been approved. But thinking about that southern stretch of San Mateo Avenue as a place where maybe we create a plaza-type environment, make the street flush so that traffic can go through during normal times, but you know, maybe we allow where we could put up bollards during festivals or weekend times, where we could have the farmer's market, we could have outdoor dining uses spill out onto it. Place for community events, really fun, interesting ideas from folks here for that community heart area at the southern end of San Mateo Avenue. People said, this is a place, people drive by on El Camino Real, they don't even know San Mateo Avenue's back there, that there's this great fabric to San Bruno, while signifying that with local art and murals, sculptures, et cetera, very much seen as an opportunity by the community. And then, we'll talk about this in the catalytic site development, but the idea there is a property owner there who's interested perhaps in looking at civic type use like a performing arts center and a plaza space down on this end. So all of this working together to create more of this community heart that people have desired. So, and then also looking at transportation and circulation improvements. We do have a full set of consultants on our team, economists, infrastructure folks, transportation and circulation folks, and urban designers such as Anshy and myself. But looking at this configuration and going, okay, how can we help create a more legible environment, a place where it's not, you know, you can't make a left into here and it creates a type of place where you go, wow, I think I saw something there but I'm not sure and I'm just going to keep going down here. Well, what might this future space start to look like with a little circulation change here? And allowing for then, places where we could put real arts, civic sense of entry, sculptural that would signify to people that something's really special going on back here. And a plaza-type environment here where there might be a future performing arts center, there would be a real legacy for the community here in this heart. So that is the overall development strategy. I went through it pretty quickly, but piecing together these pieces of the planned area and then obviously ensuring that all of these respect with and work with, or respect, give respect to and work with the surrounding neighborhood areas, mitigating traffic impacts, making sure we're making nice green connections, bicycle and walking connections. So the last couple slides here are related to the catalytic sites. There are three of them that we've outlined to jumpstart things as part of this planned process. One up here at that station area, the lumber site, two right here, interested property owner on the southeast corner of San Bruno Avenue there, or southwest corner of San Bruno Avenue and the tracks, and then that performing arts center area down here. And so zooming in on that site number one, here's where the train line comes through right now. And the opportunity here to create that more trans-oriented development, bigger scale, if you will. Here's, this is just some rough outlines here, bubble diagram of the Caltrain station platform. We talked about what that pedestrian access, we want to make sure we come up into the station area here, but also making sure that we have that really nicely lit underpass. And having parking that would be on ground floor wrapped with retail and creating like a transit plaza here and a corner plaza here. So it's very inviting to pedestrians to the surrounding area. And then above, we would have those office uses. So this would be mixed-use retail with office development here. Oops. There we go. So again, this is not getting to the architecture yet at all, just conceptually, bubble diagram. So moving on to number two here, just a little bit south, here's site number one, here's site number two. And residential over ground-four retail, this is a, really a prototype, we think, as we move forward, that could be put in a number of different places, perhaps on El Camino Real, perhaps in a sensitive manner along San Mateo Avenue, perhaps further up San Bruno Avenue. But having residential units over ground-four retail, here's the noise contour, we can do that here. And you're really offering experience where people are able to walk to shopping down here, walk to get on the train to go to their employment, or who knows, maybe they work in this office development right there. People said employment uses are very interesting to us here. And then finally, at the end, here we have San Mateo Avenue, El Camino Real, Genovine is up here. And then what might this start to look like? Performing arts center with ground-floor retail along El Camino Real and San Mateo Avenue. Parking would likely, in this design, would need to be parked underneath and structured scenario there, so we'd have to pencil that out, see how that looks. This corner plaza with the gateway feature. And then up above, we would have housing. And so that would be a particular mix there to look at the housing, how it relates to the performing arts and its uses. But you can see here, this becomes a real dynamic environment and perhaps this stretch here is a place we shut down on the weekends to auto traffic where we just have that pedestrian experience, activities, entertainment, farmer's market, that sort of thing. So again, what we need from you tonight is, does this all sound good to you, both from an overall development strategy perspective and from the sites, are we, do we have the right ones? Are we moving forward with generally the right direction there? Finally, next steps, we can talk about this at the end, but we're going to be doing, after your direction, very specific analysis with respect to transportation, infrastructure, economics. So with that, I think we can probably turn the lights on and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any comments or questions from?
Through the chair. It's a nice presentation so far, I think it has encompassed pretty much everything, at least that I'm aware of, that we've kind of been discussing and looking at. I like, I like the presentation, the way things are going, it has a good feel, it's nice to see it kind of all brought together as a check-in session, if you will. I'm excited about it. I like most of all the ideas that are up there. I think, I think the committee or, you know, with the, with the community and everything has given some really good direction. I think you folks have laid it out in a very direction, I think you folks have laid it out in a very intelligent and easy-to-look-at way that makes sense, I'm excited about it, I think it's on track as far as I'm concerned.
Through the chair. One of the real exciting things for me is the fact that there are actually property owners that are excited about this too, and we're not trying to do pie in the sky and try to sell it later, these people are part of the process and have been since the onset.
I think that's really key also.
Through the chair. Has there been any comments in the community about parking requirements and changing those? If we're going to increase the density in these areas, are people willing to look at lower parking, lower amounts of parking, especially since it's a transit corridor?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, most of the comments about parking have related to San Mateo Avenue, and we have heard from folks, well, you know, we'd be okay with maybe back in behind on the east side there, one of those larger lots, having a structure that was built that surveyed or allowed for, you know, people to use the surrounding area there. I think in general, people's ideas are that, yes, people are going to be biking more, walking more, and I think parking standards can be relaxed. Now, we are tasked with doing a parking strategy and analysis, and if you all say, yeah, this seems pretty good, we're going to be studying the impacts of that, because what we don't want to do is have these things go forward, and then there's a deleterious impact on the surrounding neighborhoods as activity generates and people are parking back in there. So, you know, but the idea is that this is predicated on transit orientation, bus rapid transit corridor, the train station itself, and that there would be a relaxing of the parking standards likely.
Thank you.
Through the chair. One other thing to add on to that, with our general plan and the adoption of the general plan, it does say to look at lower parking requirements as part of the zoning ordinance update for areas around transit, so this would be a circumstance where, with the transit corridor plan and the zoning code coming together, that we could look at our parking standards.
Through the chair. Yeah, my question actually was more towards, in the public comment section of all of this, was there support amongst the citizens for that type of change?
Yes, in general, there was, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from you, Simon?
Just have a couple of questions. Through all the meetings that you've had that started last October, is there a particular theme or comment or something that you've picked up from collecting all the data and analysis? Is there something specifically, one or two or three items that carry through those meetings?
From a larger, just where do we want to go, where do we want to be standpoint?
No, 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 just from our, just from our, the attendees of the meetings, is there something that really stuck out that felt like, yes, we want a community feeling, or yes, we want more parking, or yes, we want, is there something that really stood out that you could report on?
Yeah. I would say that, you know, this is an encapsulation of all the things that really stood out in the synthesis. I would say the idea about density or heights was not shied away from in this community, and I'm working right now over in El Cerrito on the San Pablo Avenue specific plan, an avenue in the East Bay, very similar to El Camino Real, and a community where it grew up pretty much around the same time, here, there are some more historic aspects or elements, but you know, suburbanization times and moving outward along these arterial boulevards, that community has been very shy and very reticent about, well, maybe some density, they have two BART stations there, and maybe some density maybe right there, but wow, we're really scared, that's not us, that's not who we are, and I would say that really stuck out here, that people said, you know, we're not some suburban community out in Pleasanton or Vacaville or someplace, we are next, we are along this incredibly dynamic urban peninsula anchored by San Jose, anchored by San Francisco and Silicon Valley, and we're not afraid to embrace something that, as long as we don't kill the character that we have, which there are some things we really embrace and love, we're not afraid to go forward with some density, and I've found that to be fairly surprising.
Thank you.
Through the chair. I'm all in favor of density and such, and I'm all in favor of mixed use, but what I think is lacking is open space, and I'm not talking about just parks for the sake of saying parks or something, but I'm thinking more of some exaggerated green belts or something, just, you know, unstretches, you know, periodically. It's nice to have plazas with plenty of trees and all that stuff, but we're talking about people that are going to be living in that area, and they're going to have to stretch their legs a little more than just the little balcony or roof deck that they have, you know, what are we going to do, we're going to have dogs running all over, you know, the downtown and stuff, there's, there needs to be, I just think there needs to be some breathing, breathing area for these, for these additional residents that are going to be in that area.
I think that's a really good point, I think a next step of ours is to create an open space overlay and really look for those specific places and opportunities, obviously there are a number of constraints that we have here, but you know, one of the things I would say is that the higher density development will give us revenue generation to buy land, improve park space, improve plaza space, and I think that needs to be a very concerted part of this strategy, because people did not express, people say there's a very livable place, and they did not express, we just want to go dense in stats at the, while cutting ourselves off with the livability and open space. So we will push forward on that, definitely.
Are there any other, Commissioner Simons?
You know, conceptually, I think it's great, I don't know practically if this will all come to fruition or not, but the one thing that struck me through this presentation was, when you looked at some of the specific, the three specific areas, and I was trying to visualize the properties that are there now and what might happen, for example, the bank site on San Bruno, San Bruno Avenue and Huntington, I think it looks pretty cool, what you want to do there, but I think if you go 50, 50 feet either way off that corner, you're going to have to get all the property owners in sync there, because it's going to go straight downhill as soon as you walk either across the street or up or down, I mean, it's, so that was kind of one of the first things that came to my mind, but I think conceptually, it's a great plan, I never really thought about the south end of San Mateo Avenue and how that could be changed, and I love the idea of turning that into a plaza, so I like what you've got, I hope it comes to fruition.
Yeah, to your first point, you're exactly right, you know, there are some opportunities where we might catalyze and some property owners who are coming to the table, but that doesn't mean that every one of these properties is going to turn, it doesn't mean that we can twist the arm of all those property owners, what it means is it's, the catalytic site definition means, here's, we're going to pencil this out, we're going to do a pro forma analysis, show how this can work, you know, what the gap is and feasibility, et cetera, and then allow for that natural process to go, well, hey, this guy put this in down there, that seems to be doing pretty well, and I've got this site here, hmm, I didn't know I could necessarily do that, maybe I can do the same, so that's the concept there, you're right, how does it bear out? No one can really tell, but we're trying to light the match in certain areas.
Through the chair. You know, when you were doing the presentation there, I know that Councilman Iber and myself, there was a couple pictures there that, you know, we were both going, whoa, that doesn't look too good, you know, pretty blightful, actually.
Doesn't look good.
When you look at it, it isn't good, I mean, it's like, whoa, that just absolutely looks horrible, and then as you continue on with the, you know, projected, hopeful, however you want to put it, changes in those particular areas, you know what, it's something definitely, I know it's a long-term plan and all that, but when you look at that in black and white or in a colored picture, you realize really how important it is for this process to move forward and to have the support of the community as well as, you know, everybody who sits on, you know, the corridor, transit corridor plan here, it's, I mean, something definitely needs to take place, because it's not getting any prettier, and it's only going to, you know, become more of an eyesore, I feel. I mean, yeah, it's going to be a ways out, but it's great to hear, you know, as Councilman had mentioned that, Ruane had mentioned that, you know, nice to see some of the property owners, because I had not heard that before myself, so that's very encouraging, and so hopefully that will help to, you know, change some of that bleakness, I mean, it just looked pretty horrendous, it's almost scary to have to look at.
Well, what this plan will do is set forth the blueprint or roadmap along with implementation measures, I know we're wrapping up here, to focus and say, hey, where do we prioritize our funding as it becomes available, and where do we put those improvements, and instead of, well, let's do something up here and down here and down there, no, we're going to concentrate to get the best bang for our buck from those public improvements and private investments, that's the goal of this plan.
And through the chair, one thing also, I think, one common thing that's themed that's come up throughout these is, people want to see property owners take better care of their properties, and you know, there's a lot of properties along San Bruno Avenue and along El Camino that may not turn over in the next five, 10 years, so I think what's important that this plan does is also have design standards, not only for people who are building new, but how people maintain their properties, and perhaps the plan looks into simple ways that people could fix up their properties, and we could couple that with programs like our facade improvement program, to take some of these properties that aren't turning over right away, but still make them look good in the greater context of the new buildings that are coming up.
Yes, Commissioner.
So you're suggesting sort of a maintenance standard?
Correct, some type of standard that you have to keep your building up to.
Okay. Thank you. Through the chair.
Commissioner.
I have one final question. Early in the presentation, you discussed El Camino Real as a grand boulevard concept with all the cities on the peninsula, do you know if, have you heard anything at all about Caltrans, thinking about light rail or anything that would kind of link all these cities as grand boulevard?
Not light rail, but what, there's two important things that Caltrans are doing along with SAMTrans. Caltrans, number one, is working with all cities to relax their standards, they're basically applying highway standards for a street that connects and, you know, divides cities, so trying to release, relax their standards to allow greater pedestrian improvements, street trees, things that help bikes, people walk. In the long run, SAMTrans is looking at some type of bus rapid transit system to connect the El Camino Real, so you know, things like shorter buses that move rap, you know, move quicker, perhaps a dedicated bus lane in the future to get people, so yeah, it's not necessarily light rail, because that would probably be cost prohibitive, but a better use of our bus system along the El Camino.
Thank you. There are no other questions, I'd like to adjourn this meeting, and the next meeting will be held, the next planning commission meeting will be held this evening at 7:00 PM, and right here at the senior center.